Sam Thomas was to join me today, and he called me at 1:00. While I thought it was humorous, he didn't think so. He was served with a notice of a client that was -- there was a TRO hearing scheduled at 4:00 this afternoon. And my first question was, is how do you make yourself to be available to be served? And he said, "Well, I guess I need to walk down the back stairs from now on." But in any event, he thought he was going to be able to move that, and has not been able to. And he's very sorry that he can't be here, but I can understand why. This session, we're really going to finish up what we had started last month relating to the criteria to be used by the Board in deciding applications for variances. And then, given that we are having an administrative hearing tonight relative to an appeal, an administrative appeal, I thought it would be appropriate for us to review those procedures in the code and also the procedures that this Board has adopted associated with that. Have you all met Emily Preston? Okay. She's with me this evening. And Emily, you can jump in anytime if you would like to do so. Last week, when we talked about the variance, or last month when we talked about variances, we obviously spent a considerable amount of time talking about requirement one, which always seems to be the one to cause the most issue as to what is narrow, what is shallow, what is the shape is exceptional. All of these words that are used in connection with the findings that have to be done, not created by the owner. And then, the strict application would require the owner not to enjoy the same benefits that other people in the same zoning district would have the ability to enjoy. We had Mr. Dillard and we had Ms. Butler here along with me going through these conversations concerning this one item. And as you all know, you have to find all five. And that's the way our ordinance is written today, and that's what we're governed under, that you have to do that. And I know that that's been an issue with this Board. However, that's where we are until such time as we adopt something differently. Don, how are you? Good to see you.
It's certainly late.
No, that's just fine. Thank you. So are there any follow-up questions or anything that you all want to talk about this one issue one before we go on? Okay. All right. Requirement number two, which we did get into, "The requested variance does not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief and does not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the zoning district in which the subject property is located." Okay? Can't go beyond the minimum necessary and can't be a grant of a special privilege. Now, I think the minimum necessary is one that we can sit there and examine and probably come to, while it may be a subjective conclusion, but it's probably more objective than anything else. You only need so much you can get away with less. And I've seen this Board make those decisions and make the conditions as far as the fact that it would be different. But if you're talking about granting of a special privilege in a zoning district, I mean, that one's a little more difficult, that you have to find that that's not taking place. And I don't think we really ever questioned that issue. Have we done that in the past, where we question whether, well, if we give this privilege to you, this is a special privilege?
I think we've discussed it in the past, where I believe staff's interpretation of that is within the immediate zoning district in that neighborhood. Where I would have read it previously is R-75 citywide is R-75. So if it existed somewhere else in R-75, I would have thought it would apply to R-75 across the board.
Well.
We seem to be a little more restrictive with that.
As far as the neighborhood's concerned, I would, you know, I think that's an argument somebody could make, because as far as, if there's a privilege associated with one neighborhood, then why shouldn't another neighborhood have that same privilege? I mean, that's really where somebody would have to come and do that. And I don't -- Susan, can you, Susan or Ben, can you give an example where there may be a special privilege issue that you've seen?
Well, I'm trying to kind of follow what Corey was saying. I think Corey, you were saying that it's more as what's kind of around it versus you're looking at the whole city?
Right.
Is that what?
Yep.
You know, I think that maybe we just look at that differently. I think that we're looking at the characteristics of what's around it versus, you know, four miles away.
What would be an example?
I'll be honest, I don't know if there's a clear example that I could share with you, but in essence, if we're talking about neighborhoods, each neighborhood has its own distinct look and feel.
Right.
And even within R-75s, there are going to be R-75s on the south end of the city that may be more non-conforming. Lot of records where to the north, R-75s may be conforming. So what, in terms of the staff's perspective, we do take that into consideration in terms of the zoning district. But typically, it's associated, and what I mean by the immediate area is more or less maybe like a mile or two radius. But to account the entire city and all the zoning, or similar zoning districts, it becomes a little difficult, because each neighborhood does have its own feel to it.
And you do have different character throughout the city, so.
Well, yeah, I think the rationale behind it makes sense to me. It's more of just a point to make that, you know, are you being inconsistent with the zoning, which is the way our ordinance reads? Or are you being inconsistent with the zoning of that neighborhood? I think anybody could come in, pending a rewrite of our ordinance, somebody could come in and say, "Well, the staff said it's inconsistent, but here in this neighborhood four miles away, that's the majority of the houses. Why would it be any different when we're zoned the same?"
But you could have the same zoning on the north side of town that you have on the south side of town, but the way that zoning is used could be different, in that somewhat could go to the maximum lot size of that zoning on the north side of town versus the minimum possible on the south side of town. Still have the same zoning, but have a total different character.
One thing that took place last month was the zoning decision associated with, and I don't recall the neighborhood, where there was a deck built on a drainage easement, and they wanted to enclose that deck. And there became, you know, a real issue as to the fact that we would be there approving their ability to improve that property and also create more runoff, and whether or not that's something that should be considered. Now, the argument was, and when it came back to, and jump in when you want to, Ben here, is that, well, everybody else in our neighborhood has built their deck on this drainage easement, and a number of them have already been, you know, approved to enclose the deck with a porch or whatever it may be. I think that was, that, well, that would have been a special privilege in my mind, that why would anybody be crazy enough to build an improvement on a drainage easement? And is the city crazy enough to authorize them to do it, to permit it? In that situation, we got a release from them. But still, you know, all of a sudden, we were telling this guy, he possibly couldn't do something that everybody else was able to do in his neighborhood.
Was that the area we're keeping or had it built?
No, that would have been done under the county. So, but still, I mean, how do you, you have to, you know, have to come to that sort of judgment or whatever may take place. And that's, you know, as you all sit in this position, you know, those are decisions that have to be made.
If I could, I think the hardest part with all of this is that these are objective criteria, but we have these five reasons, because all of you are probably going to have a different opinion on different things. And it's to help make it an objective decision collectively, if that makes sense. And so, that's why it sounds a little, there's always going to be potential, there's always going to be an attorney that could come in and argue that it should be interpreted a different way. And so, this is to try to make it a little bit more uniform among the different cases.
And you all have certainly impressed upon me that you do have the ability to differ in opinions.
Yeah.
So that can take place.
I'm sorry. I just walked in in the last minute.
Okay.
And I apologize for being late.
That's all right.
I blame it on the traffic or the fact that we got a.
Northside, blame it on North Druid Hills Road.
But just not having heard what you were saying, but just sort of walking in on the conclusion, it almost sounds like, and I don't know whether it was hypothetical or what, but it was an application for a deck onto a drainage easement that prior decks had been permitted improvidently. And in my way of thinking, I just, to have approved, to approve it again, is just sort of compounding a mistake. You know, nine mistakes have happened, you're the 10th applicant. Are we just going to go, well, you know, stuff happens, we're just going to go on? Or, I mean, in my mind, I don't know if that situation were to come in front of us, for all I know, I may have voted.
It did.
Yeah, I probably voted in favor of it.
It did last month.
I'd just like to clarify. Actually, it didn't go before the ZBA.
I think it made an administrative.
It was the initial discussion to go to that route.
Okay.
But we did not bring it before the ZBA.
Okay.
All right.
It was administratively handled.
I could have said yes yesterday and, uh-huh.
There we go.
Today.
But I mean, that's a good example of, again, talking about the uniqueness of individual neighborhoods, because there is characteristics of the neighborhood that were established before we even incorporated it as a city. So we are going to be running into a lot of those situations. And another thing that sort of I wanted to bring up, it was another variance, but I mean, again, I don't remember what the variance number was, what the exact address was, but it's an RA5 zoning, I believe. So RA5 is a little bit different across the board, even from developments. Some people decide to utilize all 50% in terms of lot coverage, because that is the maximum that's permitted. But some other RA5, you may not see it exceeding or meeting that maximum. You may see it substantially lower, maybe more conforming with your typical single-family detached R-75, R-100, 35% lot coverage rule. So in essence, the purpose of a variance, and tell me if I'm wrong, Tom, is generally speaking, it's based upon sort of the unique merits of that specific request related to that subject property, because even within a specific neighborhood, one lot could have issues related to topographic conditions, one may be fairly flat. So you have to sort of treat it on its own merits based upon what they're requesting and the conditions of that property, if that makes sense.
That's why we have, you're absolutely right, Ben. That's why we have variances, is to avoid regulatory taking claims, that the city has taken the property without due compensation. You allow these variances and these special exceptions, just in wide-out zoning theory, to help provide some relief. That doesn't mean that they're always necessary, but it's to help there being regulations that are so strict that it constitutes a taking.
And not to oversimplify, but you can't just take a general approach across the board, and you have to consider each case on its own merit. And I think that's kind of collectively what we're all saying here.
Right.
I mean, we could, I mean, the example that we all dealt with was the Walgreens case, and we could argue infinitum relating to those issues that were there. But you saw it all in action with that case. And there were different conclusions, as, you know, of the Board members associated with that as to what they were finding. Neither was right, neither was wrong. I mean, that's sort of the way that you have to look at it, that was there. The third is, "The grant of the variance will not materially be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the zoning district in which the subject property is located." And that's, you can, you can, you know, that's sort of like pornography. You'll know it when you see it. And you can look at it and find that it would very well be so. That would be there as far as what could be detrimental and harmful to the public. Then you've got this other finding, which I've seen you all discuss, is "The literal interpretation and strict application of the applicable provisions or requirements of this chapter would cause undue and necessary hardship, not merely impose a casual discretionary inconvenience upon the applicant or his/her assigns." An undue unnecessary hardship if you don't grant that variance. And, you know, that's a tough one. That really is. Particularly when we see the, you know, the residential lot sizes that we have in the city and the constant issue concerning setbacks, whether they be front yard, rear yard, or side backs. I mean, the majority of the cases that you're hearing this evening relate to that one issue. And you have to find that if you don't grant that, it's an undue unnecessary hardship. And you say, "Well, you just build a smaller house." But then, you have the argument, "Well, you go back up here and you say, 'Yeah, but everybody else in my zoning district is being able to build a house this side, why can't we build a house this side?'" So then, you're pushing yourself back up to that if the strict application of what you're saying puts you at a disadvantage over other people in your zoning district, then it becomes a due and unnecessary hardship. So, you know, the relationship of going all the way back up to number one to what you're dealing with with number four are really, you know, part of it. That, you know, true, you could have, you know, you could have built something smaller. Or that hardship, while you're not supposed to take into consideration any economic hardship, but, you know, you do think about it. I mean, you think about it in the commercial sense, that if we're not able to do this, then there's no way the project can work. And that's, you know, that's a hardship. But if it's an economic, it's not one that should be taken into consideration regarding that. Emily, you have any comment? Okay.
Excuse me. To be clear, an economic hardship is not a true hardship.
That's right.
Thank you.
But you will most likely hear it probably every time.
But you'll hear it.
Oh, absolutely.
You'll hear it. But it's not, it's not a hardship upon which you can grant relief, or should grant relief.
So if someone says, "We want to subdivide this lot and create two non-conforming lots because we want to build two houses and make more money."
Yeah, I mean, you have that one this evening.
And by not allowing this creates a hardship, correct?
That's right. So, you know, you have that, you have that this evening. And then, if you examine what's taking place in that zoning district and whether or not that's creating an undue hardship by virtue of the fact that you're going to reduce the minimum lot requirement for that zoning district is really what they're looking at. That's a question you have to look at.
I'd like to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
Am I overstepping my bounds?
Well, one of the cases tonight, they're not creating non-conforming lots.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that that's clear. And I think that Ms. Baucham was making a hypothetical statement perhaps, but this Board could not allow something that creates non-conforming lots. So we would not bring something to you for you to consider that would cause that, as far as lot size.
Mr. Curry, I just wanted to say that virtually every case is going to have an economic effect. It's impossible to distinguish or to separate the fact that whatever we decide will have an economic effect one way or the other. So, yes, it can't be an economic hardship that is the basis for our decision, but, you know, economic benefit or hardship is always going to be a result.
Yeah, but I think the hardship is your ability to be able to construct and use the property consistent with all the other people in the same zoning district.
Right.
And if you're not able to do that without the variance, then that, to me, that's an undue hardship.
Right. Right.
So that's.
It may have an economic result.
May have an economic result.
But it's still just a typical hardship.
But it's not a hardship. It's not, you say it's an economic hardship because I'm not going to make as much money, but that's not, that's not an undue hardship for purposes of what we're dealing with here.
I think I'm trying to say that just because there may be an economic hardship doesn't eliminate the possibility that there are other hardships on which we can base it.
That's right. And again, it really gets down to what's the property's owner's rights associated with the property that he's using, and what he's asking for, is that consistent with what's taking place within that zoning district? You know, if the lot's irregular, whatever, I mean, if you don't do it, it's an undue hardship.
Us in the seat of our pants, we're always looking at fairness.
That's right. That's absolutely right. The last one is, "The requested variance would be consistent with the spirit and the purpose of this chapter and the city's comprehensive plan text." Well, as far as any report the staff is going to give you, they will tell you that it's consistent with the spirit and purpose of the chapter and the city's comprehensive plan. Otherwise, they would, you know, obviously recommend denial. Has there been any situation, staff, where we look at that issue? We really don't have a comprehensive plan because it's in adoption, but, you know, is this sort of a non-issue at this time for us?
Well, we actually have the planning area plan from DeKalb County, so we have one, and so we're in the process of our own. Typically, that's really more of a question relative to an actual zoning case versus a ZBA case. So we really don't run into that often with ZBA cases.
And I wouldn't anticipate that you would.
Mr. Curry, in a related matter, has the city council adopted the new zoning maps? Are they now in effect?
They are in effect.
So would they affect tonight's cases, or would they affect only cases that are filed after the map is adopted?
They would affect tonight's cases. For me to say otherwise would say that we didn't have a good map to begin with, and I'm not going to say that.
Well, but the map that was just adopted at the last council meeting has undergone some changes.
That's right.
So if we had an application on a property that had changed, I would think it would be subject to the old map.
That's right.
That was properly adopted.
That's right.
But not subject to the current map.
Not subject to the current.
I mean, if there's a different zoning designation now.
If there was a different zoning on that property.
I would think it would be the new one, wouldn't it?
Would you think it'd be the new one?
For tonight's case?
But in any event, the staff review and the staff report, we've included what's appropriate for the Board to consider in that regard.
If there is a concern, it would be about non-conforming or something along that line.
Is there, has there been any changes?
It was an academic question. I don't think that there's any such case, but I just wanted to confirm that the new map is in effect and.
It is.
It is.
And is it on the website?
Yes, it's on the web, and it's posted.
But what Tom meant, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, about considering it under the old map, that would just be under questions of whether they had a right to do something that is non-conforming or not. Now, the zoning has changed for everyone. Whether or not it was a non-conforming structure under the old map or under old versions of zoning is a different question that you probably, I don't think you have any of that tonight. Does that make sense?
Seeing as how it's hypothetical, I think we can move on, but.
Thank you.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Excuse me. Excuse me. All right. Shall we move on to administrative appeals?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, this is the code section 27912, "Power and duty of the Board to hear appeals of decisions of administrative officials." What's tantamount here is that if an administrative decision is made and that person wishes to object to that administrative decision, then under the situation involving zoning matters, and it'll also be expanded to tree ordinance when that gets adopted. And we're also in the process of doing cleanup in the zoning, the zoning code, which will also be moving along, so we'll have some cleaning up. But decisions that affect administrative matters, administrative decisions that affect zoning decisions have the first appeal to you all. And it's different, the type of appeal and the type of hearing is different than the conduct of the hearing on a variance or a special exception request. And though we tend to, and have in the past, try to treat them the same way, Ms. Preston and I are going to probably recommend some changes as far as these hearings take place. If they're going, they, you know, they may be a separate portion of the meeting. In other words, they'll be special, right there for them, and they won't be put in with the new business or whatever, whatever the case would be. And I think we also have to discuss, as we go through here, the procedures the Board really wants to follow in connection with these hearings. Because as you see, you don't have to make a decision right away. You can deliberate. This is really, when you get down to, this is really a judicial function that you're doing. In other words, you're looking at what's taking place. You're going to take a standard and determine whether or not the decision was wrong under the code, or it was arbitrary, and make that decision. And both the city and the applicant or appellant have the opportunity to question that decision of the administrative board by appealing it to the Superior Court through a writ of certiorari. You all are familiar with that, and, you know, and unknowingly in the vacuum, dealt with the debacle that that had created at the time. All right, section.
Were you referring to a particular case?
No, I was just.
A debacle?
Taking an observation. I call it a debacle, so.
Well, like.
Like the time, you know, we were sitting there, yeah, I mean, so.
Well, like the Pink Pony bathroom, dressing room expansion case.
That wasn't a debacle.
I know. That was, but that was decided by us on this administrative basis.
That's right.
And then, I noted that the city council of record made a public decision not to appeal. They debated, they discussed it, they decided not to appeal, which would have been that right.
Right. Where in the situation, we were dealing with the issue at 2802, where we were in a meeting, that was a special call meeting, the issue of the city also coming through and also doing its own writ of certiorari for the purpose of protecting its interests associated with that was done. And that was the debacle that I was referring to, because it was done without, you know, I mean, it just hit everybody upside the head. It was fast, and it was quick, and whatever. It was unfortunate. Because the city, in other words, the city can't appeal without the city council approving it. That's not the authority of the city attorney to go off half-cock and file suit or do whatever. Can't do it.
Or the director.
Or the director. All right. "The zoning Board of Appeals shall have the power and duty to hear and decide appeals where it's alleged by the appellant that there's an error in any final order, requirement or decision made by an administrative official based on or made in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. A failure to act shall not be construed to be an order." Requirement or decision within the meaning of this provision. Now, the other, the reason is, is if there is a failure to act, if somebody refuses to issue, if for whatever reason, you know, they fail to act, then there is what's called a mandamus action in which that can be made in the courts in order to force a public official to do what it's required to do.
So you can't just sit on a no decision, but it takes legal action to call the question?
To call the question. That's right. And enforce them to do what they're supposed to do. And sometimes, what, you know, what occurs is that if it's something that comes to you on a decision, and you make a decision, say, affirming the finding of the administrative official, then the action that may come back, along with the writ, would also be the same type of action, saying that the public official really shouldn't have done what they did and do that. But the fact that they don't act, they can't complain to you about it. There has to be an action.
So there's nothing in the code that says, "Based upon an application for a decision, the officials have X number of days to act, and the failure to act constitutes a denial." There's nothing like that in the code.
There are in some provisions, but that wouldn't be something that you would hear.
Let's say you applied, let's say you applied for a building permit, and maybe this is not a good example, and they just sat on it. this is not a good example, and they just sat on it.
All, all licensing schemes have to have permitting timelines.
And a building permit has 30 days.
And then if they don't act, if you don't act within the 30 days, what happens?
It can stand to be approved.
Hamby, okay.
So my question is, if we hear an administrative appeal, which we're going to tonight, and we affirm the administrative decision, and it is taken to the Superior Court, are we going to be called out in the action, or will the city?
You, you could be named as a party, but you would just be named as the, the judicial party of that your decision's being appealed.
Or it's, you're not...
So you're not individually named?
You're not, like, individually being sued, but they'll, they'll say, the zoning board of appeals, and then they'll put the names of each person after that, which names who is the zoning board of appeals, so it's not as if there is a legal action being instituted against you personally.
And it's kind of a difference in practice. Some attorneys will just say zoning board of appeals, and some will actually name you individually, same thing with the city council. But anytime a variance is granted or denied and somebody appeals, you'll be named.
And it's, but it's, it's technically Mr. X, board member X, in his or her capacity as a member of the board only.
Exactly.
That's right.
So, going back to the case of 2802 Ashford, there were conversations after that debacle, as you put it, about whether or not the ZBA needed separate counsel.
Counsel, that's right.
Where did that land? Because last I heard, we were supposed to have separate counsel that I believe you were going to choose, but then never heard anything more about it.
No, it was the, it was the, I know that the discussion was with the mayor, and if the ZBA, you know, concluded that there was separate counsel that was necessary, then I would still be here to represent the city, okay? I mean, it was not, it's not, so I would still, I would still be in that position, and to represent the staff and represent the city, and if the ZBA wanted to have separate counsel as far as running by legal opinions to them and not to the city attorney, there's, there's nothing that keeps that from, I mean, that's available.
But what you do...
At those expense.
But, but there's an expense.
Yeah, and what you do typically is, your role as the judiciary, or the quasi judiciary, depending on what role you're serving as, is to file in a writ, in these type of proceedings, is to file the answer, and the answer is the record that you guys looked at below. And so the attorney would be helping you, and typically the secretary or the clerk would prepare the answer. You don't file motions per se, you don't actively involve in the merits of the lawsuit?
No, in DeKalb County, the practice is that where you are sued, another attorney will answer that, because it will answer that because it too is also having to, to put in the ordinances and do whatever. In the case of 2802, it was another lawyer that actually answered on your behalf, it wasn't, it wasn't me.
Well, tonight's appeal is one where, as a judicial body that we are, most judges have law clerks, right? There are lawyers who do research for them, help them, you know, brainstorm their opinions, give them advice, whatever. You know, this, this case, without talking in the specifics of the case, but this, like many other cases that may come later, are something that there very well could be an appeal either way, no matter what we decide. And it wouldn't necessarily be bad or good, but we have to make a decision, somebody's going to be aggrieved and have the right to appeal, so, you know, it does seem like a case where, this might be one where we need special counsel appointed to help advise us on, on this case. I mean, this is a code, a code interpretation case in many respects.
True, and, and here, you know, and, and in connection with, with, with the presentation of that case, we will be, we will be representing the city and the staff and the staff's decision. And, and so whether or not, you know, what we think is, as far as what we think is the merits of the case is not an issue.
You're an advocate.
That's right.
You're an advocate, sir.
It's not an issue.
So what's the procedure if we decide we want to consider special counsel? What steps do we take to...
Well, first of all, I think you, you know, the people that can appoint counsel is the mayor and approved by the city council. As far as special counsel or whatever it is, any lawyer other than me, or, or Bill Riley, when he was in this position, had similar appointments. If I, if I brought another attorney in from the outside, when we were doing the zoning map and all those issues, actually, we had an attorney that came in and that he was, his, his engagement was approved by the council. And short of that, there's really no other way to do it unless you just, or we sit there and we go to the mayor and say, "Mayor, go to the council, we want to be able to consult our own attorney, and this is who we want." And they concur with that, then fine.
So we would have to defer the case and make an application to the mayor and city council that would be heard?
Or, I mean, I mean, or as Corey says, I mean, this, this, this was discussed, I, you know, I know that Tim discussed it at one time. Mayor's discussed it with me, and I said, "Fine." I said, "If that's, you know, if, if they feel that they, you know, have to have that, that representation." I mean, it's like, you know, the development authority has its own attorney. And, but you're right, on these types of things and on these types of hearings, no matter what we think, we're, we're going to be advocating for the city.
Right. Have we currently covered, as a board, under any sort of directors and officers' liability policy?
You're covered by immunity, under governmental immunity.
But...
Don't you remember that, when in the movies, when they sit there and yell governmental immunity, but where you get shot right between the eyes?
Sure, sure.
Aren't there, aren't there, are there any limits, though? I mean, isn't there an opportunity where you could abuse it and lose it?
Well, if you're, you know, as you always hear, the zoning lawyers getting up, and they argue that if you don't find their way, you're being arbitrary and capricious, you know, I mean, which to me is just calling you, just making, doing a dastardly deed. To get to the point that if, if you were doing something that was outside of your authority, okay, I think you could be subject to that. If you had, if you had a personal bias and, and you just said, and you were arbitrary, I mean, being arbitrary is one thing, and then being capricious, I mean, it almost has to be some sort of malice to, you know, that, or complete disregard for what, what the ordinance says in order to get to that, but I think even at that point, the immunity's still going to protect you.
Immunity doesn't afford defense costs like a typical public officer liability policy would.
Yeah, you would not, not, that is something that I have never seen.
Never seen what?
Never seen a zoning board member get sued for damages. It would, they would always be suing the city for damages.
Sure, but we, under a typical policy, we would be afforded defense costs.
Well, and I'm sure the city would do the same thing.
Mm-hmm. I'm just saying, it's not something that happens, and it's not saying that we shouldn't look into it potentially, but it's not typical, you could be sued, we say sued, but really it's an appeal.
Sure.
And I'd just like to add to that, I've never seen it happen in 32 years either.
And in terms...
First time for everything, right?
In terms of getting appealed, I think you should be concerned about, obviously, doing what you think is right in terms of the ordinance and what the advocates argue, but you could be appealed or sued for a variance grant or denial too. I mean, it's something that, any case, that there's always that possibility, so I wouldn't hang your, hang your hat on it.
Let's talk about the standard, Mr. Curry.
All right, well, let's go back to paragraph D.
Yeah.
What time is it?
It's 5:20.
Okay, so let's, let's finish, we'll finish with this. Like all good lawyers, I don't wear a watch, so you never know how much time. I thought it was about 8 o'clock, Chad. All right, if you go to the second sentence in paragraph D, "The appeals shall be sustained only upon an expressed finding by the board that the administrative official's action was based on an erroneous finding of a material fact, or that the administrative official acted in an arbitrary manner."
Much harder to prove the latter, isn't it?
Well, true, because if, frankly, if, if there's, if there's an erroneous finding of a material fact on the part of the administrative official, that if that find, in other words, you find that the facts are different, okay, based upon what was considered in connection with that decision, and that you find that those facts are actually something different, and had those facts, you know, were what you considered them to be, what you found as a, as a fact finder, you're sitting as a jury also, that, then yes, that would, you would say, then if, based on that, that was really the case, and that should have been what took place, and I think that's my phone.
Sam calling to tell us he's on his way.
Oh, that's Mary Jo Curry. Don't tell her I did that. But, you know, that's, you know, you're, you are, you are a fact finder, and if you find that the facts differ from what the decision was made on, then that's, that's a basis upon finding a reversal.
Seems like that, seems like that type of, and since it's an either/or, right, we could overturn it based on either one, that's one that would seemingly jump out at you a little more, would be a little more clear.
And then the other, saying that you've acted in an arbitrary manner, well, arbitrary, to me, would mean that it's, the finding was in complete disregard of what, really what the ordinance says or intends to say.
Did you give us all the definitions in West, or, yeah, in the law dictionary? You know how they have several?
No.
Did you give us all you want? You gave us one, I remember.
One definition on arbitrary.
Of arbitrary, right, there may be others.
I, I think there might be another one, but I'm not, but, but I, I think it was not related to this.
Oh, you wrote the brief, Lyndy?
That, that part.
She will be arguing that case tonight. But, you know...
And obviously, that, that standard, you know, whenever you file any kind, as a lawyer, whenever you file any motion for summary judgment, we, we will argue a little bit about what the standard is.
Well, what, what's, what else can be arbitrary?
Well, the Supreme Court has, in general, big picture, they've said that zoning decisions are arbitrary, and keep in mind, this is my argument this evening, so please take it with a grain of salt, but they are arbitrary if they do not bear a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare, in terms of the zoning case. I know that's, that's a little archaic, but that's the, the legal definition of arbitrary.
Well, you quoted Black's Law Dictionary to say that arbitrary means founded on prejudice or preference rather than on reason or fact.
Yes, that's what Black's Law says.
So, lack of reason...
To me, is that if you would look at, at what the decision was, is that, under the statute, or citing even further as far as the public health and welfare, that you're not going to make a decision that's going to hurt the public, then nobody in their right mind would have come to that same conclusion.
And in the terms of litigation for zoning cases, I think it comes up mostly when people are alleging some type of unequal protection argument, or that they were treated differently in one case than another case. Also, that's something that you might hear, arbitrary, but that's not necessarily, that's what the developers or the people coming in might argue, that just to have another...
We don't have precedent. We don't have precedent.
Each case is unique, it's kind of difficult to be arbit...
I was just giving you the other, other point of view.
I just think arbitrary is, it's, you know, it's classic, don't confuse me with facts, I've made up my mind. Yeah, I mean, that's, just, you know, like you say, notwithstanding, any other person would have found differently, that you just, you know, it could be prejudicial, it could be, you could be hard-headed, but usually it gets back around, there's some reason, there's some prejudicial reason why the person's doing it.
Prejudice over reason.
Or, or they're just uninformed.
Yeah, the fact issue is, is the other side of the or, but in this case, founded on preference rather than, or prejudice rather than reason seems to be the most code, you know, concise way to look at it.
As I always say, when people, when we read these things, and there's, you know, there's decisions made in subjectivity, we have 159 courthouses in our state by virtue of the fact that people have differing opinions.
Except for Hancock County.
What is Hancock County?
Well, they, they moved it. It burned down.
Okay. I think it's 5:30, so...
It's tied in.
Would you like to have other topics to discuss in the future? Anything that jumps at you?
Maybe a topic on official immunity and potential liability?
I think that would be a worthwhile discussion to have, because...
Agreed.
Again, last night.
All right, well, then, we'll do that, we'll do that next month, you all will, when it comes time for the regular meeting, you can, you can authorize that. And now, we're going to go into the work...
Can we, can I, we're in August now, can I suggest we move to that to October?
Fine. Actually, that would work, that would work much better.
What if you get sued before?
So, you can, you can bring that as far as at the time of the meeting. Now, you're going to go into the work session, and your chairman has resigned, so until you elect a new chairman, which you have the authority to do, but you can't do that in a work session, then Mr. Beardsley, as the vice chairman, will, will then assume the chair of the work session.
I'm prepared to call the meeting of the work session, meeting of the zoning board appeals to order. Is that, do I have any objections from the board? Hearing none, I call the August 20th meeting of the zoning board of appeals work session to order. The first order of business is roll call. Mr. Self?
Present.
Mr. Bolia?
Present.
Mr. Veers?
It's Vires.
Vires.
I'm here.
Glenn?
Here.
Vires. Ms. Baucham?
Present.
Jed Beardsley is present. So we have all five members present, clear, clear quorum. We've had our training, I believe, so item three is organizational and procedural items. Madam Director?
I'm going to let Ben handle both the work session and the hearing tonight, so he's going to talk to you a little bit about organizational and procedural items.
Well, just as a reminder, in terms of the organizational and procedural items, as mentioned and as provided in the agenda for the regular meeting, just a reminder, is again, for the nomination election of a chairperson for the remainder of the 2014 term. I believe beyond that, there is no other items. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Okay.
So when it comes to, excuse me, when it comes time to elect a new chairman, what, what do we do?
I'll call for nominations from the floor.
Okay.
And...
You'll open the meeting.
All right.
Okay.
Offer, offer the nomination for the chairman position.
There's a queue there for us to do something.
That's right, and then he'll, he'll make the queue. And, and the way I see it, we could have two, not two nominations, I mean, we could have one nomination and then a motion to, you know, approve that, that nomination, or we could have two nominations, and then basically we're voting between A or B. Any, anybody have seen it any differently?
We could have five nominations.
No.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, because there's no restriction on nominating yourselves, so it's unlikely.
Mr. Self, that would be a debacle.
That would be a debacle, I agree.
And it's also unlikely. Okay, so then, if there's no, well, would, would unfinished business in the regular meeting be part of unfinished business in the work session? So do we need to talk about ZBA cases 30, 38, 46, and 47?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's do that, and particularly if you could point out any new information that's been delivered or received.
Sure, I'll be more than happy to. So ZBA 1430, if you recall, it was deferred for 60 days. It was a request to reduce the lot width for an R-100 zone lot from 100 feet to 90 feet. The request, in essence, was to create two lots, of which currently it's, it's a single lot. I believe four members, Self mentioned or requested the applicant to provide a revised site plan, sort of... site plan, sort of providing a little bit more information related to how it would be impacted if the average setback was to be included and applied. And if you recall from the email that I sent out today, unfortunately, this came to staff late yesterday afternoon. We haven't had enough time to be, in all honesty, to review it thoroughly, to provide sort of a, a staff's perspective. What I can mention to you right now is, it's still lacking some information that we would need to provide a correct synopsis of the revised site plan to the board. What I mean by that is, and could you?
Ben, if I may interrupt.
Yes.
Do we have a copy of that site plan here? It's page.
Yeah, we emailed it, I, I don't have actual hard copies, yes.
Is it not this one?
Yeah. That's what they provided 60 days ago.
Oh, there's a new one?
Is it in the computer?
This is the, what we received electronically and, well, hard copy yesterday.
I see the adjustment being the front setback on the left house, more to an average.
Well, the thing is, they, they call out an average here. They call in an average of 75.42 feet, if I'm correct. But they haven't correctly, sort of delineated the average setback to the individual lots. It's sort of, they're just doing an angle from one corner of the property to the west and to the other corner of the property to the east. So, in essence, if I, when I was measuring it out and scaling it, it's not correctly representing the average setback. In addition to that, we would have preferred, in terms of the staff's perspective, for them to provide us the actual measurement of the lot width based upon the average setback.
And, and if I could add, if you don't mind, Ben, we really have not had enough time to review the revised plan. You all haven't had enough time to look at it either. So, there may be other things that we're not sharing with you right now because we haven't had time to review it.
So, you're recommending deferral?
They're requesting the lot.
Well, I mean, as the board, you have.
They're not, I am.
You have the ability to move forward, which, with a motion of deferral, approval, denial. You know, but like I said, in terms of staff's perspective, we are not.
There are other issues in this case that relate to. Have they, have they properly told us about any floodplain issues? I mean, this lot on the right is way down in a hole.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, like we sort of alluded to last time, initially, the home itself, as it currently stands, is situated farther back onto the property, but I believe it was to account for, exactly, I can't necessarily say if there was, if there's a creek or if there's some type of body of water that would impact development on the lot, but again, it's not represented on the site plan, and I believe that was another issue that was brought up to the applicant during the last meeting.
Completely redrawn, drawn the layout of the houses, and they're not pushing the side setback envelope, so they could set them back even further if they had to, so that doesn't appear to be a limitation. To me, it's the part that we don't know.
Well.
The things we don't know that.
Yeah, well, you got to keep in mind, the request is for a lot width, right? And one thing that gets a little complicated, and I don't necessarily want to complicate the matter further, but per the ordinance, when it talks about lot width, lot width is supposed to be measured at the street frontage, the, the right-of-way adjoining the property. In addition to that, the lot width is also, has to be, or measured at the point of the required setback line, the front yard. Per the ordinance, it's, it's not very clear. All it says is required front yard setback. In this case, it could be either or, depending on the situation, which one is built first and so forth, because if the average setback doesn't apply, then that's when only the district requirement would apply, and the district requirement in that case would be 35 feet.
And we shouldn't let them play the game of, well, we want to build one first so that we can push the.
Sure, but it's just a consideration for y'all to, to, for the board to understand. And in addition to that, and then, once you factor in the average front yard setback, it does change.
Are we allowed to make a condition if we approve this, that, you know, we'd just say that you'd have to use the average setback of those two houses on either side? Could we make that a condition, or is?
Yeah, it's definitely, anything could be placed under condition based upon if you were to move as a collective group for approval, but.
But you would have to make sure that the lot width does not fall below what has been advertised.
Right, so the main thing here is, they advertise to reduce it to 90. Any other request that is greater of a reduction than 90 feet from 100 to 90, that essentially would require them for, to, to resubmit.
Yeah, and as, as I recall, Ben, that's why we deferred this, was because they're asking for 90, but they hadn't shown us where the average setback would be, or if it would apply.
Correct.
And we didn't know that it would be 90.
Correct, we weren't sure, just we didn't have the information, and even now with the revised site plan, we still don't have that clarity that we're seeking.
Isn't there a deadline by which they're supposed to submit documentation prior to the meeting?
Well, per the rules and procedures, there isn't anything specific per cases that are unrelated to an administrative appeal. But in this case, generally speaking, what the board generally tended to do was say, hey, you know, at least two weeks in advance of the, I believe, the posting of the agenda.
And I'm guessing we didn't do that with this one?
Got it today.
Well, you got it this morning, so.
Right, but did we, did we say we needed it earlier and they just provided it this morning, or did we not even set it?
I don't believe for this case, it was specified.
Okay.
Okay, but we, I had talks with the applicant, asking them to provide it earlier or sooner. But it, again, it came yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving on, ZBA 1438. It was deferred from last month per the request of the applicant for the standalone ATM kiosk at the former Harris Teeter Shopping Center. They did provide a revised elevation, revised site plan, and also a revised letter of intent. If you recall from the staff report, the initial application requested for a variance to elimination of the second story requirement of the overlay. That was the only request that was made by the applicant. Staff did state in the report that they were lacking a variance to the building elevate, or the building materials applicable to the overlay, as well as the setback requirement associated with buildings or primary buildings within the overlay, which is no greater than 20 feet. With that said, the revised letter, they did submit a revised building elevation where they showed that the ATM kiosk could comply with the requirements of the overlay, which showing that it would be fully brick. And Drew, if you could bring that up.
Where, what, where are you looking now for this information, new information? Is this on ZBA packet 79?
What page?
What page, Joe?
Let me get there.
Oh, 49?
No, it's actually page.
57.
Yeah, 57.
Yeah.
57.
Yeah.
Ah, yes.
It's also up on the screen. So, initially, I believe it was all stucco that they're requesting, which is not a permitted building material. The revised elevation would show that it would be primarily brick, which is compliant. But if you look at the actual letter of intent, the revised letter of intent, which begins on page 53, the, they requested that additional variance be considered, which is for the actual setback requirement, because they're exceeding 20 feet from the front property line. But with that said, if you recall, this is a deferral from an actual application requesting a single variance.
Right.
In order for them to tack on an additional variance, they would have to go through the process all over again. And with that said, even with, if that was part of the consideration, staff would still proceed with our initial recommendation of denial.
So, have they moved the location? Or are they just asking for a variance?
Asking for the same location.
They're asking for the, the same location. They're referencing the same distance requirement, or what we reference in our staff report of being setback 48.2 feet. Drew, could you bring up the revised site plan?
What page is it that they're asking for the additional variance?
53.
How can we grant an additional variance if they haven't gone through the process?
We can't.
We can't.
Right, I just wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just more for, just to bring it up, that they did represent, or sort of request that through the letter of intent, but unfortunately, we can't move forward with that request. The legal ad has gone out, the sign posting has been on the property advertising a single variance.
We've been, we've been criticized, shall I say, for trying to help people who made procedural mistakes in their application and kind of demonstrate forgiveness. What's your feeling of, what's your administrative recommendation as staff as to how we deal with basically errors in, in the application and trying to ask for something that we can't grant? Well, obviously, you can't grant it, but, I mean, their choice is to, we rule on what they've applied for, which is incomplete, or, or we, you know, make it clear to them and then they stand there and withdraw.
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, they could request by their own admission to request a withdrawal without prejudice, based upon the discussion that takes place as part of the public hearing. But you always have the, technically, you, as the board, would have to deal based upon the request that's been made before you.
But we have to tell them, we don't have the power to grant you the second variance.
Sure, sure.
They can't build it without that second variance.
They can't build it there.
Yeah.
They could put it on the other side of the park.
Right.
Yeah.
But in either case, it would require them going through the entire process all over again, just because, again, the legal procedures that we have followed in terms of what we have put out in terms of the legal ad, in terms of, and the way in which the board sort of goes about reviewing cases, typically, it's associated with an approval conditioned to a site plan as well, so.
Okay, so we don't have a site plan to condition the approval of the one variance,
or at least a compliance.
Right, a compliance site plan. Right now, they're still in the same location, they just wanted to add that additional, tack on that additional variance.
You guys with, you guys follow that?
Yep.
You know, I mean, they did make a, an effort in terms of providing a crosswalk leading from the sidewalk to the ATM kiosk, but in either case, they were still required to apply for additional variance.
But they don't have to wait two years or a year or something to do it, they can add another variance.
Unless they're, unless they're denied.
Right, if we approve this variance and they don't have enough, they can come back and apply for the second variance.
Well, if you, essentially, if you approve this, then by, sort of a de facto approval of the, the second variance.
No, no, no.
What's the second variance?
The setback.
To be further away from the street than they're allowed to be. They're allowed, they have to be within 20 feet from the right-of-way, is that right?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is this, at this point, it's based upon sort of a site plan and the general procedures, and again, this is just based upon previous actions that have taken place. It's always been conditioned to a specific site plan, so that you know exactly what you're dealing with.
A compliance.
Exactly what you.
A site plan with which we agree is otherwise compliant.
Right.
So. Where are they, can you tell me where they're trying to move it to?
They're not trying to.
They're not trying to move it, and that's the problem. It's, it's far, too far from the street to be compliant, and what Ben is saying is, if we gave them the variance to just build it, they couldn't build it where this site plan says, they'd have to build it close to the street, but we don't have the condition of our variance to say, you know, we approve it subject to site plan, so.
Sure.
I mean, we could approve it, and then they'd have to come back and ask for a permit, wouldn't you have to?
Yes, they would have to comply with the requirements at that time.
So, it's not fatal?
It's not fatal, but for the most part, if you approve something with the, an approved condition, you just know what you're going to be ending up with out on site.
Didn't staff recommend approval, though?
No, we recommended denial.
Changed your recommendation.
Although, the, the recommendation has stayed the same, which has been denied from the beginning.
Okay. Thank you, let's move on. Anybody else want to belabor that one?
Yep.
If you don't mind, if I could combine 46 and 47?
Oh, yeah, absolutely good.
All right, so 46 and 47, as you recall, there was a lot of change in terms of the property and the builders associated with the property. We understand that there's always been a single owner, but he has had several builders, architects that were involved in the design aspect of the home. And I believe board member Self tasked staff to obtain the original building site plan, which I believe I have. And Drew, if you could come up with the, the original building site plan? You can start with the.
Isn't it in our packet?
Yes, it is. And let me check the page number on that.
Two of them, I suppose.
The first one.
Page 72. 72 was stamped June 6th.
75. 75 would be the first one, which is the site plan that's on the screen up there for you.
That page doesn't have a 75, is it this one?
It's hard to read the number.
It's much smaller.
That's 75 right now.
This here, John? Oh, John, very small, okay.
Yeah, I need magnifying glasses.
Definitely harder to see.
Is there a date on the, it says G-101, the drawing is G-101, is that?
Yeah, what I would say is this, the, if you recall, the, both the applicant as well as the next door neighbors, Stott and Barbara Wachowski, I believe, that's her last name. They mentioned that Richard Rakusen was the original architect. And this is actually a copy of the site plan that I received from a planner that was in charge of reviewing this initially. And I've also confirmed, because after that meeting, I had a discussion with the adjacent neighbor, and I showed them the actual permits that I had in my possession, or the site plan, and I've confirmed with them that this is the exact site plan that they, that they're familiar with as well.
Saying this site plan, you're talking about the original one?
The original, that's up on the screen.
75, the one that stated March 4th, or whatever, 2013.
Yes.
Clearly compliant with the seven and a half foot side setback with no bump outs.
Well, there is an overhang feature, if you look to the north. There is, there's a slight bump out on.
North is to the bottom of the page.
Hold on, let me, oh, sorry, I apologize. To the west.
That's to the left of the page.
To the right of the page.
The right. It looks like a, like a window or something?
No, the right of the page is on this one, yeah, yeah. These are mirror, it's a mirror image with the.
If you're comparing the two, you've got to flip one of them around, because they're printed opposite.
Flip it the other way, like you had it before.
So, the west, the west side is on the, the right-hand side of the page.
That's correct, on page 75. And so, the only bump out there is, is almost like.
On the window overhang, yeah, right.
That's not what they built. They built an entire room that bumps out.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's different. It's different from the original. Okay? And in both cases, both for 41, 1041 and 1045, in both ca, both cases, it's slightly modified from what the original site plan showed.
Modified to go into the setback.
Yes. So, with that said.
And what does it currently say it now on the side setback? I mean, on the, yeah, how, how far does it go into the?
Three feet.
On 1041, the closest encroachment would be 5.45 feet from the property line.
Two feet, two feet and a change.
Yeah, and then for 47, which is 1045, it's 4.91 feet.
2.6 feet.
And the, the approved plan did not encroach beyond the seven and a half feet, is that?
Slight, there's a slight bump out, if you look.
I mean, how far is that? It looks like it can't be much more than. Okay, so just that little piece.
At most, maybe, at most, maybe a.
All right.
Maybe a foot at most.
Okay.
There are mirror images on the two.
Yeah. This was the approved plan they got from the Cav County?
Actually, through us.
Just that tiny piece there.
In this one, it's here, and in this one, it's there.
But mind you.
This one, we've got this whole wall that comes out. So, I've flipped mine around.
That's the current drawing?
This is their current drawing.
Yeah.
They've got a whole wall that comes out here.
As built.
Okay.
So, the builder thought it only mattered what the hangover was at the ground level, the foundation.
What pages are that?
So, this is their current drawing. This is what was approved.
Right.
The bump out on the west side here is just this tiny little piece.
72.
It's your, your seven and a half. It's just that tiny little bump out. It's just that tiny little bump out.
Right. Seventy-two is as built, right?
On here, that bump out doesn't exist, but instead they bumped out this whole wall over here beyond the build line. The build line goes right down there and they've bumped out to here, it looks like.
So you can see what they just did. They just, they took this and they just kept going.
So they're even showing, let's see, they're showing five point four nine is their clearance on this one, but they're showing seven five five and they approved.
Right, okay. And this is, this is the other home that they own, they're building ten forty-five.
Is that right, Ben? Ten forty-five is the other one?
Yes, ten forty-one, ten forty-five.
So the, I mean, not to say, but that's, that's his house. This is his house. So he's encroached in the setback with the property that he owns. I'm not forgiving that.
They also increased the front yard setback or decreased the front yard setback from the original plan to what they did. And it's hard to read the numbers on this thing.
Yeah, the original plan is actually, they're showing thirty.
Uh huh.
So for forty-one, they're showing it correctly.
Okay.
So the forty-five was the one where they had sort of the skewed foundation layout.
Right. Well, someone being inclined to agree with you, if particularly.
All right, can we slow down a second? So, did they build, if we're just talking about forty-one, did they build the front, build it to the proper front building line as shown on the original site plan?
Well, I'll tell you this, because remember, we, we had a discussion in terms of the interpretation of the average setback and the application of it and how it should be applied and how to go about calculating the average setback. Meaning measuring from the side property line seventy-five feet. Unfortunately, that was not done when this originally came into the city. That interpretation, again, is not a change in interpretation, it's a correct interpretation from our end in terms of applying it correctly. But with that said, for ten forty-one, the front yard setback of the original site plan shows a setback thirty feet. The ten forty-one as built shows the foundation of the property showing at thirty feet. So those are shown, you know, I guess you, you could say compliant to the original site plan.
Okay, but it turns out that now they, that it would be thirty-six feet under the new inter, so they built the front to the plan.
Correct.
And the front setback interpretation changed.
Correct.
So it's a little harder to punish them for that.
Correct.
Okay. But they, they just didn't build on the side setbacks to the plan.
Sure.
Now, is, are they asking for a variance on both sides of the house or just one side?
We had the discussion too. It's actually for both sides. What staff did was account for the, the greatest encroachment related to a side yard. They are encroaching on both sides.
Are they bumped out on both sides or is it?
They are bumped out on both sides.
I guess I'm not seeing the encroachment on what would be the east side.
On forty-one?
Hold on, sorry, I'm looking at the, the permitted plan.
Well, you know, the, the permit and the one in the original plan are upside down to the streets on the other side, so.
I'm with you then.
But it's hard to see that, is that measurement eight point, I'm looking at forty-one, the as built.
Yes.
It's eight point three eight on one side, eight point three, it looks like.
Mm-hmm.
But it says from the overhang is six point.
Right, what they're doing is they're giving you two measurements. One from the foundation is eight point three.
Right.
The other is from the measurement of the overhang, which is six point eight, okay?
And then we're saying the overhang is just as much of an encroachment as any.
But this is the other discussion that we had. Overhang against cantilever, cantilevering of the, the actual heated space.
Right, it's one thing to put a soffit or a gutter sticking in.
A roof overhang.
Right.
In this case, it's beyond the roof overhang.
Sure.
Okay. But again, I can't necessarily talk to the original site plan of what they were trying to represent, were they trying to represent just the foundation? Or is it an actual correct assessment of what they were going to put out on the, in terms of the, the completed house? That I can't necessarily confirm, but one thing that I did confirm is this is the original site plan.
Okay.
But with that said.
What about actual building plans? Did they have to submit building plans for over, of getting a permit?
Uh, I'll tell you this much. If my understanding is correct, when I initially came on board with the city, I don't think that was a requirement. For residential, single-family detach building permit for someone to provide, for the applicant to provide, uh, building elevations.
Okay.
I believe that was all sort of handled out on the field.
Didn't we also ask these applicants to work with their neighbors and try to talk to them and try to come to some?
We did, and we got in the packet where one of the neighbors wrote it.
And that's what I was going to get to next, is the letter that was provided by the adjacent neighbor, Doug Stott. In essence, the Stott, uh, the Stotts or the, the adjacent neighbor is in agreement to proceed with, they would like to recommend approval of the applicant's request. In conjunction to an approval being conditioned to provide some type of water quality measure. In this case, some type of water flow, or sorry, uh, flow well system to capture stormwater runoff associated with those two individual properties.
And Ben, can you remind me, are they at ten thirty-seven or ten forty-nine?
They are ten thirty-seven.
Have we heard anything from the neighbors at ten forty-nine?
Ten forty-nine, in essence, they're in agreement with the ten thirty-seven neighbor as well. They just would like for some, certain measures to be put into place to account for stormwater runoff.
Okay.
For both ten forty-five and ten forty-one.
Is, is the way that Mr. Stott described that condition that we condition on water quality control pits or catchment pits, is that Bennett out? I mean, what's the best way to state that if we made that a condition?
Technically, what is appropriate runoff?
Excuse me?
I would say, um, a condition that would state installation of stormwater storage facilities with the capacity to receive one point two inches of runoff to be discharged through evaporation, transpiration or infiltration. Or, um, to facilitate discharge through those measures.
That's more than I could write down at one time, but I heard installation of stormwater storage facilities to receive one point two inches of runoff and dispose through what?
Designed in a manner to facilitate discharge of the stored volume through evaporation, transpiration or infiltration.
Trans, trans what? Transportation or infiltration?
Trans, transpiration.
Transpiration?
Yeah.
Or infiltration?
Or evaporation.
What is transpiration?
Transpiration.
Uptake by plants. The intent there would be that the facility would be designed in a way that it would receive that volume of runoff from the impervious surfaces. And actually, that should be added in there. That is, uh, stormwater storage facility designed to receive runoff equivalent to one point two inches of runoff from the impervious surfaces. I'd add that in there. But designed in a way that would simply facilitate discharge in that manner. That is, it'd be captured and would be structured in a way that, um, uh, some of that discharge would occur in that manner.
Bennett, let me ask, we, suppose we grant this tonight and we make that stipulation, that condition, and we say, uh, transpiration, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
So the builder goes in and he, he puts in the appropriate plants to absorb the water. He sells the home and the homeowner comes in and says, I don't like these plants and I want more space to let my kids run and rips the plants out, right?
It's conceivable that could happen, but.
Takes more than a plan. Doesn't it take some sort of facility, a basin to collect the water?
Well, the typical installation is simply not much more complicated than installing a, people call it a pit. You excavate an area and, in the, in this case, it'd be in the backyard.
A flow well.
Flow well installation would be a common installation. The, probably the greatest, the, of those three options, the greatest magnitude of discharge would be through infiltration in the soil. Provided the soil has the percolation rate to receive it. If it fills up and can't, you know, can't receive any more volume, there'd simply be runoff as there normally would be. Plants planted above the facility would provide some measure of relief for the stored volume. But you wouldn't expect that plants are going to be uptaking or, you know, discharging that runoff in a manner that's going to mitigate the impacts of a, of a rain event that's underway. If it was configured in a form of a rain garden or something like that, then plants would help with the discharge of the volume stored in the rain garden, for instance. So it, it's not that the discharge would have to occur by all three measures, but simply that the design is of a type that would facilitate, or I might say encourage discharge of at least a portion of the volume in that manner. It wouldn't be a concrete vault that's just going to sit there and hold water forever.
All right. Could you also just use a rain barrel?
Rain barrel is not part of what we would recommend as a condition, although it would not be frowned upon. The, rain barrels generally don't, they don't have the capacity that would provide a significant amount of mitigation when you get those, uh, major storm events that are fairly common in the, in the summer.
So you'd have to have the rain barrel on top of one of these pits, I guess.
And rain barrels are generally going to be placed adjacent to the house at the downspout, although if somebody is going to a more elaborate system, it certainly could be in the form of a cistern or something like that.
Does the board feel the need to go a little bit more extensive on ten forty-five?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So if we can move on to new business, I believe the first case is the appeal. Emily, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to share in terms of the work session?
I'm, I'm just going to decline because Mr. Dillard's not here.
Okay. So we'll move on to.
I think we need to come back to that though, because we probably need to go over the procedure that will be used. Emily, would you like for me to locate Mr. Curry? I'd be happy to talk about the procedure. I just didn't want to talk about the merits.
Emily, just to clarify, you're saying Mr. Dillard or Mr. Curry isn't present?
Mr. Dillard.
Okay.
Because. I was referring to Mr. Curry. I thought Emily was waiting for Mr. Curry.
She's saying Mr. Dillard.
So let's stick to procedure.
Correct. It's, it's going to be a little bit different than your normal procedures and it's section seventeen B. I don't know if you guys have a, a copy readily available. But each party will have ten minutes to present their argument with the unused side being used for rebuttal, so that, that is similar to a normal zoning decision. The order is a little different. The order of the presentation at the hearing will be first persons other than the parties, and the parties are the city and the applicant or the appellant. So you allow them to speak in favor of the appeal or against the appeal for three minutes each.
Ten minutes in favor, ten minutes against?
They have, there, I don't believe there's a time limitation on theirs, but on our presentations, there are the ten minute time limitations.
Non-parties go first, separated into two camps?
Mm-hmm, just like a normal.
Is there one that should go first, for or against?
In favor is first and then against, and they're limited to three minutes each.
In favor of the appeal?
Yes. If there happens to be anybody, there, there may be in favor or against. And then the appellant will go and the appellant has ten minutes.
Sorry, three minutes each for the non-parties?
Yes. And then the appellant will go.
That's the Dillard.
Which is the applicant, and he'll have ten minutes. Then with the ability to reserve rebuttal time, then the city will present for ten minutes and then any other person with interest. But I don't believe we've had anybody file a notice of appearance in this case.
So. I'm, I'm not sure if I do follow, but.
Why do the non-parties speak first?
Hold on, hold on.
That's what the code says? It's seventeen B, did you find it?
I have seventeen B, yes.
Can I peek at it? Thanks.
Um, so, so Mr. Byers raises an excellent question. Why do the non-parties go first? And then to follow that up, if I can, we've seen some emails regarding this case already. I expect there will be a number of people who will want to speak that are not a party to it, but just neighborhood residents. Does each person get three minutes or each side gets three minutes?
Each person gets three minutes unless, unless they're speaking as, as the applicant or his agent.
Okay.
Do, do we have the authority to change the rules?
You do, and we, we have been contemplating changing the rules because this is a little unusual to allow public participation in an appeal.
So maybe limit the public comment portion? Instead of giving everyone three minutes, it could accumulate into a long time.
If we have, right, if we have the entire neighborhood come out and they all get three minutes to speak, that's, um, late night. Well, you're certainly entitled to put a ten, ten-minute limit on it if, if you so desire.
Or twenty or?
We would just need to amend the agenda to do that at the beginning of the, the session.
We need a motion to limit non-parties to ten minutes total?
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess that could be based upon taking account how many people would like to speak on, you know, in favor or in opposition, you could say.
Oh, but it sounds like we need to do this at the start of the meeting before we ever get to this case, if we're going to amend the rules.
Procedural items?
Yeah, yes, it would be at, at the very beginning during procedure. You would need to make a motion to amend.
We can't really assess, okay, how many people would like to speak, we're going to limit it to ten minutes, fifteen minutes, whatever.
And you have the authority to take out that part completely if you wanted to at this point or limit it.
I certainly don't want to do that. I'd like to hear from the public.
You just need to make sure that you vote on it through a motion at the beginning of the hearing to change the rules and procedures.
And, and should we vote on that and change and say, we want to limit it to ten minutes and then we get to that case? And the comments are, are coming in and people are using the ten minutes and there's still a lot of people that want to talk, can we at that point extend that time?
I believe that, that you have the authority, similar to, it's, it's similar to what you do for your variance cases.
Public comment.
For a public comment. But just keep in mind that the applicant won't go until after that is finished and then the city and then the applicant can reserve time for rebuttal. And then the last person that would go would be a person of interest, which typically could be a neighbor. And Ben, we have, have we received any filings from people saying that they are persons of interest?
No, not, not officially.
So how is the person of interest different from public comment? I would think the neighbor would get up during public comment.
It's, they were, they were required to give the city notice seven days before the appeal, that they, they wanted to speak during that time.
Okay, so we won't have any of that then, based on, okay.
No, so, and I'm sorry, I wasn't here, but I assume what we're saying is that we want to limit the public comment to ten minutes instead of three minutes per person?
Three minutes per person, ten total.
Ten total, okay.
Both. Both three minutes per person with a cap of ten.
But what, what, what the procedures say are, is that you've got three minutes per person with no limitation.
We're just adding a ten-minute cap.
Per person?
No.
Total.
Total.
Okay.
For each side, for and against, ten minutes.
And we're just talking about the appeal right now, not all the other cases.
Yes, just the appeal.
Yes.
I don't know if I'm really comfortable adding a ten-minute cap though.
About like twenty or something?
When it's public comment, because I think, you know, the public, anybody who gets up and stands, stands here and talks to us during public comment is going to be directly impacted. Otherwise, they're not going to waste their time to come out to a meeting and get up and talk to us.
I'm not saying we have to limit it, if you.
But I don't know that I want to limit it to ten minutes. I don't know that I want to leave it wide open where, you know, thirty people show up and they each get three minutes.
Just one item to consider, if you had a chance to look at one, one email that came through, and I don't know what other emails that you may have received individually. Generally speaking, I think their, their sort of objection, you could say, for the most part, is related to a feature of if that site was to be developed as a restaurant, more than it's associated with the actual appeal.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So again, just to, just to put that into perspective.
I think we need to be clear at the beginning of the case as to what we're actually hearing, because there will be a lot of people here thinking that we're going to be making a decision about whether or not a restaurant's going in, and that's not the case.
Yeah, because that's part of a secondary fee, uh, process if, you know, if it was to go through a certain, um, result. If it was to end in a certain, specific result here from the board, then that would be a secondary sort of aspect of the process that would apply to that property.
But where would that aspect take place?
Well, I mean.
Here.
Well, that would go before the planning commission, correct?
Correct, if it's a rezoning matter, then yes, it would be going before planning commission and city council.
But if it's, if it's a matter that they want the condition changed and you find for, if you find for the applicant, then they can go straight to city council. That's the only place they can go to. They can go to.
Uh, it's, it's still planning commission and council.
They would have to go through the actual rezoning process in terms of the changing conditions as, uh, per our ordinance.
Okay.
And if that concludes forty-eight, I think we can move on to the next cases. That's all right with the board?
Actually, if we can stop for a second. So, so if we were to affirm the appeal. So, so if we were to affirm the appeal, say, the, they would then have to go to the planning commission?
No, they wouldn't.
No.
No.
The appeal is over and a rejected application. If you affirm the appeal, then they would have to then meet the city, what the city's arguing is the requirements for the application. If you denied it, then it, it would go to the planning commission.
Well, when I say affirm.
Right.
Their, their appealing.
You affirm their position, then they would, it would just, the application would proceed.
You affirm the appellant's position. In other words, you reverse, you reverse the administrative decision.
Right.
But if we affirm the administrative decision...
If you affirm the city's position, then the city would just require that they meet the, the additional requirements that they're asking.
Understand that, okay.
Right, they would have to, their, their petition, their petition...
Okay, so if I, if I disagreed with the city's position, ruled with the applicant, or with the, with the appellant, what then happens procedurally for them? What is, what, what is their next step? Perhaps the city appeals?
Well, if, if there would be, but the city council would have to approve that.
Okay.
The, if, if you, if you hold in favor of them, then their application would go forward.
Okay, and that would then require a rezoning, so they would have to go to the planning commission?
What I understood was they were just asking for the condition to be waived. Is that not true?
A change of conditions requires the entire process, a rezoning to change conditions, so it would go through the planning commission and the city council.
Because then which...
That's all they're asking for. They're not asking for a change in zoning, they're asking for a change in, in condition.
But that's different than what you just said, isn't it?
No. It's the same, it, the matter in which they're actually changing the conditions from is based upon an actual rezoning that took place in 2006 through DeKalb County.
Right.
Which was basically that everything will look like the Woodley project.
Right, and then that's the process that they took in terms of the rezoning process of planning commission and their board of commissioners there. In order to effectively change the conditions that were part of a conditional approval of that rezoning, they would have to go through that same, I guess you would consider a legislative process on our end, which would be this identical to a rezoning application. Although the zoning would not change, it's the conditions related to that specific zoning that would have to follow that same procedure.
And, and where the whole appeal tonight is about whether they met the application requirements to start that process.
Let me see if I can summarize it. If we vote, if we rule in favor of the developer, then the developer's application as originally submitted, without the approval of the other neighboring landowners, can proceed. If we vote in favor of the city, then they can still make an application, but it would have to meet the standards that Ben felt it did not meet, and get the approval of the other landowners to, to file an appropriate zoning application.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So we, by voting to uphold the city's decision, we are not taking away their right to file an application?
Absolutely not.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just, just this application?
Mm-hmm.
So if you were making a motion, the motion would be either to, how would you, it would be a motion to deny their appeal?
Affirm or deny the appeal.
Yeah, it would be affirm the administrative decision, or deny the administrative decision, you could say. If the board is satisfied, we can move on to 49, unless you have any other questions.
I say we move on.
Okay. So I'll try to go as quickly as possible considering the time that we have left. ZBA 1449, it's a request to reduce the side yard setback from seven and a half feet to three feet for a proposed addition and carport.
Which page are we on?
241.
242?
Okay. Thank you.
The 242, so.
Right, 241.
Okay. Okay, so with that said, again, the, from the letter of intent, if you had a chance to review the letter of intent, and if you were to compare it with the site plan that's up on the screen, the applicant wasn't very, they did mention that they would like to expand the property and to include a carport and an addition, a living space addition, but they weren't very clear in terms of where that distinction would be between a carport and the extension of the home. When staff made a site visit, we felt that a carport would be, may be appropriate in the fact that a carport is technically unenclosed, it would have a roof over it, but in terms of the living area, it would be a full enclosurement and be an extension of the existing home. But with that said, if you were to, if we were to proceed with the, allowing the addition separate from the carport, it may pose, staff felt, some safety emergency concerns that be associated with accessing those portions of the property, considering that each lot adjacent to it is fairly in close proximity to, of each other. So with that said, staff has recommended that the board deny the requests, or deny the variances as requested, but substitute in lieu thereof approval of a carport only, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the, in the staff report. The first one being, the depth of the carport shall not exceed a depth of 25 feet per the depth of the existing western wall of the home. That's one. Two, that it has to maintain a setback of three feet from the property line, and that the carport shall remain unenclosed except for a roof to go over it, and that the roof line shall also meet that three-foot setback requirement.
What was your safety concern, or what was the city's safety concern?
Safety concern is based upon the proximity of homes of each other.
Right.
If, if there's enough room for an emergency apparatus to access the home, if there was a full enclosurement that extended far beyond a carport, you could say, towards the rear of the property, mainly it's about access and accessibility of emergency.
I understand that, but the, the enclosed area?
Yes.
Is no wider than the carport?
Well, from what they're saying, no, it's not. But on the flip side, we felt that, again, carport, we could somewhat provide and we could understand based upon the location of the driveway, and that's a logical sort of location, wherein the, the expansion of the home could take place towards the rear of the property and be in line with the required setback of seven and a half feet.
So then you're saying, I, I, I don't understand your safety concern. So are you, are you suggesting that an emergency vehicle is able to get by a carport, but not a mudroom in back of it?
No.
Or that it wouldn't be able to then make a left-hand turn to get to the back of the house?
Well, what I'm saying is this, even with the carport and the addition in place, they, an emergency...
By right hand.
Right. The emergency aspect of it, they might not be able to get it from the right hand or even from the left-hand side. If you, if you were to go out to the, to the site...
I did.
Right. We felt that it didn't provide necessarily the enough room for them to access over adjacent property to get onto the, the subject property in case of emergency. But more or less, more or less, our argument is more from the house to the left than it is from the right, in the proximity of that addition in relation to the proximity of the home to the left-hand side.
So...
We're on Toby.
If, if they were to, instead of doing this entire proposed addition, if they were to cut the carport off right here?
Yes.
And come over to the three-foot line?
Right.
In your favor of that?
Yes, 'cause they mentioned specifically that they needed at least 12 feet for a vehicle, for a single vehicle to safely access that portion.
So then, is there anything to prevent them from doing their proposed addition, just not coming up quite as far?
No.
Stay within the build line?
As long as they stay within their building line, they're fine.
And would that, that additional, I, I guess if they stay at the build line, you feel there would be enough room?
Yeah, because...
To pass the carport, back into the backyard?
Correct, 'cause if they were to gain, if, if emergency vehicle had to gain access from the property to the left, if, if you go out to the side, the, the driveway sort of extends to the point where the carport would end, and to go beyond the carport extension into the extended living area, it may be more difficult for an emergency vehicle to access that portion of the property.
Right, but I guess my, my point is that the carport is going to go right here anyway.
Yes.
All the two-thirds of that carport is going to be blocked by that addition.
Yeah.
That goes out to the property line.
Right, mainly it's, and our, again, it's emergency, but it's also the difference between unenclosed and enclosed.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's the main sort of argument from our end.
Not just emergency vehicles, but firemen running through.
Well, many, you know, there's, could be many factors that may be associated with it. We can't necessarily account for all, but I mean, the main thing is you have an enclosed structure and an unenclosed structure.
All right. Okay, that's my vote.
So that's 49. 50, it's a request to reduce the rear yard setback from 40 feet to 16 feet to enclose a rear deck and relocate the landing and stairs associated with the deck, and also as part of that sort of change, an increase in lot coverage from 35% to 40.7%. If you review the staff report, initially, we felt that the calculation provided by the applicant in terms of the proposed impervious coverage didn't appear to be correct. So we went back and measured it, but our initial measurement, I believe we sort of exceeded what the requirement may be, and that's what we advertised for 40.7, which is not a bad thing, because essentially when we re, reviewed and recalculated the lot coverage associated with the subject property, we determined that it's actually 36.6%.
Currently.
Currently, or proposed.
They only need, they only need 36.6.
Correct, not the 40.7 that we mentioned initially.
Should we round it up and make it 37, just to be safe?
Well, you are welcome to do whatever you please.
Is that just because of the difference between counting the entire deck versus a lot of that, you know, two-thirds of the, the deck space underneath is already a concrete pad?
In all honesty, the, the difference was, we didn't have a clear indication of the scale of the site plan.
All right.
So once we were able to scale it out to where we felt comfortable that was the appropriate scale, and when we recalculated, it came up to 36.6.
I was unclear about the, the statement that follows, the recalculated lot coverage revealed that it exceeded the maximum allowable impervious coverage for R100's own lots?
Yeah, so R100's own property, the maximum is 35%.
Okay.
So we just wanted to reiterate the fact that although they did not require as part of their application, 'cause they were only seeking the reduction in the rear yard setback, staff felt that it would be appropriate to also include it because it's an associated matter. So with that said, we just wanted to make a distinction that within R100, 35% is the maximum, and they're exceeding it.
So they're at 32.77 now. In your calculations, are you counting that concrete pad under the deck as, as new impervious?
No, no. And, and the thing is, we didn't wanna necessarily go back and also calculate what they're currently, currently have in place. I would assume that it's greater than 32.
Okay.
But we only wanted to account for what would be based upon the proposed.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
They're, they're just proposing 10-foot wide stairs instead of the current four, four and a half or four?
Well, yeah, the thing is, as you can see on the, the, there is no arrow there, but on the north-hand side, you could say, at the top end of the, the subject property, you'll see that the rear portion of the home juts out a little bit further towards the rear. They're relocating the deck, or the landing and the stairs to the back end of that. If you go, Drew, if you could go to the other side plan associated with that? Have it up, okay.
Second page.
So Jed, that 10 feet is going to be a set going down, that'll be about five feet, and then another set when you turn, coming down.
So Jed, if you look at the screen, that's the proposed. So they're relocating the deck. What page is this?
This is the part I don't understand. It just looks like, I, usually when you have a turn, it is an L, and there's no L.
Yeah. I think what they're doing is they're coming onto this landing from the deck, they're going down to another landing, and then down that way.
I see what you mean.
Yes.
I see what you mean. Yeah, I see what you mean, okay.
And essentially...
So that's a landing in the middle halfway down or something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What is their lot coverage right now?
Well, they're stating that their lot coverage is, I believe, 32.77.
And not really any different coverage than if you just went straight down.
You didn't find it to be any different from what they stated?
Right, because it's short, yeah.
We didn't get into the, what they're representing as current.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We were more concerned with what they were proposing, what the, the lot coverage would equate to in terms of the proposal.
We have any neighbor objections of record in this?
We have received no objections.
Okay.
It's a vacant lot next to it, vacant lot behind it.
Yeah, and so staff has recommended approval of the request with, you know, conditions limiting the, limiting the lot coverage to 36.6%.
Next.
All right. ZBA 1451 is a request to reduce the average front yard setback from 122.4 feet to 111.4, and also to reduce the side yard setback from 10 feet to 4.3 feet for the, for a proposed home expansion. As the property currently stands, essentially what the applicant is requesting to do is actually what you refer to as a pop-top. It's a single story, they wanna add a second story onto it. The footprint of the building would stay the same. There is a small corner on the north-hand side of the, of the building itself that encroaches into the, what you would consider the average setback of 122.4, but it's a minor encroachment, it's 2.8. But the, the, the reduction in the average front yard setback of approximately 11, well, 11 feet to be exact, is to account for the stairways, the stairway and steps associated with the porch, and to account for the, sort of the topographic challenges leading from the driveway into the front entrance of the home itself. So we felt that staff could support that request. In addition to that, there is a stream buffer.
It's not covered, right? It's not a covered porch or stuff?
Just a roof. It's not unenclosed. I mean, it's not enclosed, all right?
The stairways would be covered.
Not the stairway, just the porch portion.
Okay.
Yes. And they do have a stream buffer, and that's why the building is setback or placed in its current position. As part of this, as part of this request, there is no impacts in terms of land disturbance associated with the stream buffer. In essence, they would be, essentially they would be removing existing impervious outside of the stream buffer, which would be beneficial. In addition to that, the...
Uh, condition? That would be, will that be covered by a site plan condition?
It'll remove...
They're showing that on the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the carport, as it currently stands, I believe it's setback 5.5 feet from the property line.
4.5, you said?
Well, it's a 4.5 encroachment into the, so, well, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make it simple from, in terms of the perspective of the staff report, yes, it's encroaching 4.5 feet. They're wanting to...
It's a two-foot difference on the side, isn't it? Aren't they just asking for two feet more than they currently have on the side?
Let me just double-check real quick. Just wanna make sure I gave you the correct...
So they're already encroaching 4.5 feet into the side yard setback?
Actually...
And they wanna increase it to six point, or 5.7?
Actually, I, that was a typo. Per the site plan, it's 5.5 feet, it's setback 5.5, not 0.1.
Existing?
The existing carport.
Okay, so that's in line...
So in essence, they're asking to encroach 1.2 feet further into the side yard setback.
That's what I was trying to figure out. It's plus 1.2 feet encroachment.
Correct.
Not much.
And actually, the, the depth of the carport would be lessened. It would be shrunk with the portico share and then they'll put in a second addition on top of the, the carport, you could say, in essence, which would function as an unfinished storage area. And we felt that, again, in comparison to the adjacent home, there's enough room for any type of, sort of, to consider any type of emergency situation. And we felt that that would be appropriate and staff has recommended approval for both variances.
And also, they, they seem, you know, they seem to give the staff a whole lot more detail than most applicants.
Yes.
All these extensive drawings, elevations, I mean, that's nice. That shows serious.
Yeah, they definitely put a lot of thought and consideration into that overall renovation. Lastly.
Action of record yet?
No. And for all the.
Letters of support in there.
Yeah, from the, for most of these, except for the appeal, we haven't received any opposition. Moving on to fourteen fifty-two, it's a request to reduce the front yard setback along Mayberry Oaks Drive from thirty-five feet to thirty-one-point-five feet and also to increase lot coverage from thirty-five percent to forty-three percent. In essence, the request has been, the, the request has been made as part of the applicant's wishes to locate a pool and I believe is, I believe to also expand or to include a sunroom as part of the overall build. Previously, they received three separate variances from DeKalb County. One was on the, if you're looking at the, the site plan, to the left-hand side, which is, you would consider that the front yard setback along Mayberry Road. On that side, they, they had, they received a reduction from thirty-five feet to thirty feet from DeKalb. They also received a reduction in the rear yard setback from forty feet to, I believe, twenty-six feet. And also, on the interior side yard setback, they received a reduction from ten to nine feet. We felt that based upon those previous approvals from DeKalb, it provided them with ample room in order to build what it is that they wanted to build and also inclusive of a pool. We felt that if it was, if we were to also allow for the reduction in the front yard setback of, along Mayberry Oaks Drive from thirty-five to thirty, thirty-one-point-five feet, it actually may allow sort of, let's see.
Ben, would it be safe to say from page three seventeen of the package that the building envelope or the building area for the corner lot across the street is smaller than the building area already approved for this subject property?
Well, let me check for you.
It appears that way.
Lot thirteen.
Right, lot thirteen is a process.
In comparison to one. Actually, lot thirteen, it's, the gross square footage for lot thirteen comes up as sixteen thousand, six-twenty-three. And for lot one, which I believe is a subject property, it's fifteen thousand, three-eighty-two.
So it's, even though it looks bigger on the drawing, it is actually smaller?
Yes.
Does everybody understand this is a brand-new subdivision?
Right.
So this was laid out.
Yep.
You know.
And again, in the letter of intent and sort of going back to our training session in terms of how we go about comparing similar uses within this, within the same zoning district. I know the applicant mentioned numerous times in the, in their letter of intent that there are other homes within the R-100 zoning district or maybe possibly even within this development that have the pool, that has a pool constructed on-site. But again, to, to our recollection, we don't necessarily know, we can't necessarily confirm, but this property could also have a pool on the property as long as it meets the requirements of the zoning district. And again, being that it's a planned development, it's a planned subdivision that came into place, we felt that the variance as requested was not warranted and so we have recommended denial.
Would it appear to you that they have a potential buyer to build a contract house and, and that buyer says, hey, I want this lot if I can get a pool and that may be a condition of the contract?
It's really hard to say. I, I don't know if it's necessarily like spec homes, you could say, or sort of.
Not a spec.
It's not long.
A buyer saying, I'll buy this, let you build the house if I can have a pool.
It seemed, well, it seemed like, I'll tell you this, it seemed like the, the actual property owner is much more involved if you looked at the letter of intent. The applicant is the owner, I believe.
At Rockhaven Homes?
Rockhaven Home is a developer.
Right.
But I believe Mr. Moore would be the actual purchaser.
Okay.
But in the letter of intent, it, it appears that he was heavily involved in the, sort of, the design, the layout aspect.
We're saying you can have a pool and there's a way to have a pool within the confines of our zoning. You said that they've already received three.
They received three, yes. Yes, they did.
And they still want more?
They still want the additional front yard along Mayberry Oaks Drive and also the lot coverage.
Correction, the owner is Rockhaven Homes, a subsidiary called Berkeley LLC because it says the owner is Berkeley LLC and Brad Hughes at Rockhaven Homes is the, showing as the owner on the application.
Right, I apologize. The, I believe from previous discussions with staff and specific, which I believe was the applicant. I see, okay. So there are conditions of, on their end in terms of the purchase of the property. Okay, and that would conclude the, the cases for tonight.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I can't second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.